The Planning and Zoning Commission, the very first item on our list is the approval of January minutes. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for January.
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes for January, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. All right, now we're going to move on to the first item, well, rather, the second item, the first item of our public hearing, which is case number RZ 2022-001. Applicant Delena A. Denman is requesting a rezon of property located at 2220 West Washington Street, parcel 30368 of City Edition, block 140, lot 1A of the city of Stevieville, Ewath County, Texas, from B1 neighborhood business to B2 retail and commercial business. And Mr. Steve Killen is online on Zoom and will be presenting this case for us. You can hear us. Steve, you there? He's unmuting, maybe.
Can I try again?
Steve, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am, I think we're on mute.
Okay.
This is not an audio piece.
Okay, so I just introduced the first case, RZ 2022-001, so if you want to give us the background on that.
Great, that was quick. Commissioners, this case is for properties over on Dell Street. The applicant is requesting consideration for change in zoning from B1 to B2 retail and commercial. If you look in your packet on page four, I believe this, if you scroll down to the maps on the property profile that you've included, you will see that, of course, the properties are served by adequate water and sewer. And if we look at the current zoning, the property in question, this one is 220 West Washington, it is currently zoned B1 with the future land use of B2. The applicant is wanting to rezone this, use for the highest and best use of the property, and considering the surrounding properties, looking at the future land use map, we can see that a lot of the properties adjacent east-west, south of the property, and then also north are all commercial. When we look at the current zoning, of course, there's a lot of B1 zoning, this property and the sister property for the developer that we are looking at and considering tonight are both B1. To the east of this particular parcel is a family medical office. And then the three residential properties that you see in the current zoning map are one properties, two of those are associated with a rock house, two are owned by Rock House, and the one in the middle is privately owned, and I believe that property was conveyed to the current owner in 2010. We have a list of uses for B2, and in the packet as well, you'll see that there's a rendering of what the proposed building would look like in the future if the rezon was approved. I believe we have Kyle Moore representing the owner tonight, and he is also attending the meeting by Zoom, and with that, Madam Commissioner, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Steve?
Steve, we've got two pieces of property that back up to each other that are asking for this rezon to put the two properties together, I presume is where they're headed.
Well, some separate properties, and I did mention both in my presentation, probably form on my part, but they are separate properties, they are both wishing to rezon, and I believe Mr. Moore is wanting to, or hoping to acquire both properties and has future projects in mind that are better fitted for the B2 zoning, which is the future zoning. So great question, and thank you for giving that opportunity to put it out.
So, action of this commission on these two pieces of properties, if in favor and goes to council, we could see these two pieces of property for replat later?
Yes, sir, I believe the developer would have interest in replating those into one parcel and pitting the building on the property as one parcel.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve. The developer is also online on Zoom.
I'm here, my name's Kyle Moore, I'm with Fair Capital in San Antonio. Thank you, guys, for having me on the meeting by Zoom. So I'll just kind of echo what Steve is saying, our plan is, we have both of these properties under contract for redevelopment. We just had new surveys on the properties, they're developing preliminary retail site planning and engaging retail users. Our request is that they're rezoned to B2. Our plan is to replat them as one parcel, and our best and highest use, we think, is likely retail drive-through or retail strip center with in-cap drive-through, and I'm open to answering any other questions that you might have.
Where would you propose ingress and egress to these combined properties?
It's probably too soon, and I'm thinking for us to even address that. Right now, our issue is simply the rezon. When it comes back to us as a replat, then it becomes an issue. So what we need to decide is simply, this one property, is it appropriate to rezon? Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, I'm going to stay on the meeting because I'm here to listen on some other cases.
Wonderful. We're going to go ahead and open a public hearing now. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezon request? Is there anybody who wishes to speak against this rezon request? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion, and then we can discuss.
I move that we approve the rezoning request.
Second.
He got in under the wire. All right. Do we need to discuss? This seems like the logical move forward for this property, for the location.
Yeah, it really does, and I can tell you that parcel's already been, it's already being appraised as a commercial property, so it doesn't make sense that, it looks like a house, but it really is already being used as a business, as actually a couple of businesses, so it makes sense.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. The motion stands to recommend to council approval of this rezon request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, this motion goes forward with a recommendation to council to approve. Next up is case number R02022-002. Applicant Donald and Mary Sparks are requesting a rezon of property located at 2223 West South Loop, parcel 30369 of City Edition, block 140 and 145, lot 1A-S of the city of Stevieville, Ewath County, Texas, from B1 neighborhood business to B2 retail and commercial business. Steve?
Yes, ma'am, so this is the, I guess, this is your property to the plan that we just discussed, so not a lot of additional detail here. Again, the owners are wishing to go from rezoning requests from B1 to B2. As stated earlier, the adjacent residential properties, two are owned by Rock House, one is privately owned. Looking at the future land use map, the request is in agreement with the comprehensive plan, and staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Steve?
Good.
Hi.
Steve, the developer says that they have the properties under contract, but from experience, if one of these properties falls through after the rezoning, and especially the property that we're talking about now, which has got a newer building on it than the other one, and the property is rezoned, but the contract doesn't close, or there's a problem, does that affect the operation of that, of what's in that building now? Because then the current owners have the property and they haven't moved it, but it's being rezoned.
Great question, Commissioner Hines, and I believe what I would venture to state as the answer on that is that both applicants are the owners of these parcels, and both have expressed interest to go from B1 to B2, just to maximize their opportunity for future development. Therefore, if one or both of the properties do not close in this acquisition, the zoning would remain as approved. If it moves through the commission and the city council for B2, those properties would be zoned for B2 uses, and again, in alignment with our comprehensive plan.
Other questions? Thank you, Steve. I'll once again throw to the developer, do you have anything that you wish to add?
Just to tack on to what Steve said at the end there, the property owners both put in this request with us as purchasing these properties, and they look at it on the 2223 West Loop, or South Loop, I'm sorry, it's adding value to their property for future development, so if something were to happen and we didn't close, it would be zoned B2, which is just adding value to their property, so they were excited to request the rezon. And our plan is to replat them and do retail development on both of them.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezon request? Anybody who wishes to speak against the rezon request? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Bruce, gotcha. All right, do we need to discuss? All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so that will move forward to council with a recommendation to approve. All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate your time. All right, moving on to case number R0, or I'm sorry, RZ 2022-003. Applicant Michael Weeks is requesting a rezon of property located at 1620 West Swan Street and 1680 West Swan Street, parcel R33562 of South Side Edition, block 13, lot 1 of the city of Stevieville, Ewath County, Texas, from industrial to multifamily residential. Steve?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, you likely recall some of the adjacent properties coming before you in previous months, and this is a property on Swan Street. Currently, there are two existing apartment buildings with eight units in each building for a total of 16. There's some space available on this parcel that the applicant is requesting that we allow for the construction of two additional buildings, or I'm sorry, one additional building with six units, bringing the total up to 22 units. If you look on page 27 in your packet, that's where we are for this particular staff report, and we have maps included that show water and sewer in the area for this particular property. And then the property in question is 1620, 1680 West Swan. On the current zoning map, you see that it is currently zoned industrial, but it's being operated as a multifamily use, which is a non-conforming use, based on when the zoning to industrial occurred. What they're proposing is being moved to an R3 property, and if we look at the surrounding properties in the area, you see that a lot of the properties are indeed R3, and considering the future land use plan, this property was in the future land use plan as being industrial. However, if you look at the properties in that immediate block, you can see that the future land use has all of those identified as multifamily. And the recent cases that I mentioned to you, being at Lilian and Swan, and the triangular piece adjacent to the railroad, those are all townhome projects, and so that would go well with this apartment property across the street. So with that, in your packet, towards, we do have a site plan, a preliminary site plan that shows how the proposed buildings would fit on the property, and that is on page, I believe, 32. And you can see that they can actually make this fit within their property without intruding upon the railroads right away. There is a drainage detention pond proposed in this site plan, and doing a quick count on the parking, it appears that they would have adequate parking, which all of that, of course, would be reviewed during the planning and process. Again, the request does not necessarily comply with the future land use comprehensive plan, but seems to fit the properties in the surrounding area, and even considering some of the recent cases brought before the commission. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Steve?
Steve, has there been any consideration or concern about the parcel that sits, kind of indented into this parcel, where there's a large tower? Is there any concern about that tower and how it might affect the property?
No, ma'am, that has not been identified by staff. It's any type of challenge for the proposed request.
Okay.
Steve, two things. First off, if the project goes forward and we recommend to council and council approves it, would we be seeing a replat?
I'm not necessarily certain that it would require a replat, other than to show the additional buildings as a footprint, so we can certainly coordinate with the county if they request a replat on that, we would be glad to direct the ownership through that process.
The reason I'm asking is because on the project on Rice Street that we looked at in November, where the old Pallett project was, the initial zone, when it was actually rezoned, came in, and the concept was there, and a lot of parking was there, but the detainage, the detentions on stormwater was not there. When it came in on the replat, all of a sudden, all the guest parking disappears because now they got a big detention pond. And you're saying that on this, there's adequate parking, there's going to be retention, and the only question, and so there should be no issue going forward or plan review of all those items being resolved on the property the way it is?
That is correct. I believe the project that's being presented, major challenges that would prevent us from being able to allow the project to move forward through the land review process, and as far as the replat, I'm not certain that that would be necessary, but I made a new survey being involved with the county, we probably will survive, so I believe we have an expert on the commission that may be able to help with that question, but I'm certain that the project, based on the information that we've gathered so far, would be a project that would be successful as presented.
So, the only other question I have is the property across the street, which is a mobile home park, and there's only a few trailers there, mobile homes there, and the rest of them are abandoned, is that property already something different now?
Yes, sir, on page 36, if you look at the current zoning map, there's actually 422 Lilian highlighted in kind of a lime green, you have a triangular piece of property adjacent to the railroad, it's R3, and then 1601 Swan is multifamily. Those three parcels are actually a townhome development that will be taking place, and the mobile homes have been removed, or in the process of being removed, there are a few left as they wrap up their lease agreements. And then also, it's, I believe it's 1541, those were, that particular parcel had five mobile homes on it, those have been removed, and so what we're seeing here is a transition in the area from the mobile home type housing to townhome and apartments.
Okay, I'm just catching up.
Yes, sir.
All right, we good? Any more questions for Steve? All right, thank you, sir. Is the applicant here tonight?
I am.
Would you care to speak, do you have anything to add, or do you feel this has been sufficient?
See, you did a great job, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer questions, but you did a great job explaining, as you said, there's already, there's two kind of empty pieces of land there. One detention area, it's already where the natural, where the water flows, I've got an engineer, timberwork, it's already done, kind of plan and profile, and then drainage. So there is a designated area, the water kind of already drains, that's not, that's not existing parking, so we don't expect any changes as far as, we have more than adequate parking as is, and we even have, there's a plan right now, the existing parking lot is really wide, we could do a third row kind of in the middle if we needed more parking. So as far as the replat, I don't see any issue, or we have to replat. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezon request? Anybody who wishes to speak against this rezon request? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move for, that we recommend to council approval of RZ 2022-003.
Second.
Nick, go ahead. All right, discussion? Seems logical and easy-peasy to me, I think it makes sense.
It's just housekeeping right now.
Yeah, it really is, I'm in agreement, Brian, it doesn't make sense to keep it zoned industrial when it's already being used as apartments.
There's already apartments there.
It's surrounded by additional housing and some storage units, but yeah, that makes, it makes sense.
All right, all those in favor of recommending that we approve the motion to recommend to council approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that moves forward to council, thank you, sir, for coming. Next up on our agenda is case number AS 2022-0022, abandonment of Sloan Street from Harbin Drive to St. Felix Street. Steve?
Yes, ma'am, so the city has a history of working with Tarleton as they acquire properties to allow the abandonment of streets as they expand their footprint, and I believe what we're doing here with these next, this case and the Paul and Free cases, is basically taking some preliminary steps to allow the city the opportunity to work with Tarleton as they acquire those properties and bring this area into the, as they do this, it will bring us closer to what is illustrated in the comprehensive plan. And on page 39, I believe, is where this begins, and if we scroll down to the maps that are included, we see that what we're looking at here is the abandonment of the street as identified in the description. Obviously, not all the properties have been acquired by Tarleton, but we do know that they're in the process of acquiring those rather quickly. And we have the current and future zoning map that included, and as you look at the future zoning, you can see that this entire area is designated as Tarleton School or City property, but I think the direction that we're going is for the expansion of the Tarleton campus. So this, of course, requires a public hearing before P and Z. The council initiated this action on February 1st, and so the next step was to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing. Again, I don't think that we have any anticipation or desire to close these streets in the immediate future, abandon these streets in the immediate future, but as the process evolves, if those properties are acquired, we want to have the ability to move forward with that. We did check with other departments, we had no objections from public, I'm sorry, from the police department, fire department, development services has no opposition, and engineering, public works did state that there would be certain things that would have to be maintained. If I go back up to page 41, for this particular parcel, for this abandonment, the existing sewer main would have to be abandoned to private ownership, and the existing public water main would also have to be abandoned to private ownership with physical disconnection or meter installations. And with that, Madam Chair, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Commissioners, do you have questions for Steve?
So, once this is all done, Tarleton will then do the, or will the city do the disconnect at that point to where one side of the utilities is Stevieville and the other side of the, that the connection becomes Tarleton?
That's a great question, I want to venture, yes, and it would be our public works department that would ensure that those disconnects were performed to their satisfaction, to make sure that line didn't pose any threat to the city systems.
That kind of follows on my question, then, how will, will this, any of those disconnects affect services being provided to, to the properties that are still owned by citizens or even, even across the street where the bank and the resident, will that, will their access to those be affected at all?
No, ma'am, it should not cause any trouble to the adjacent properties as these properties are disconnected from the lines.
Okay.
In a past life, I was an associate director In a past life, I was an associate director at A and M College Station, a physical plant, and we would do this a lot. And the university would eventually take over because then they owned all the property.
Right.
Some properties, over time, were being leased from the university because of other issues beyond acquisition, and they became part of the university's system, and College Station separated itself. And I suspect that as this school continues to grow, we're going to see more of it. Now, the other question, Steve, is that, is there a financial burden on the city to do this? Or does, how does, how is the legal structure put together such that, that all that property that is now owned by the city becomes the university? Do they pay the bill, or is the city paying the bill, or is we getting, or am I getting in the weeds on this?
Well, I think what I can speak to is the process on how the property would be acquired, and there is a process that, forth by state law. Basically, each adjacent property owner, if the street was abandoned, would have the first right of refusal to purchase that portion of the street that's currently owned by the city. So as far as the, I guess, the financial burden to the city, we would actually convey that property based on either a private appraisal value or property value of adjacent properties based on current tax rolls. And as far as the work related to the disconnects, again, I'm not, not one hundred percent certain on this answer, but I think that would just be a cost that maybe the city would absorb to ensure that our potable water supply and our sewer mains were adequately protected as the disconnects occur. I know as new taps, if we kept the water online and there were new taps involved, the city could perform those with tap crews.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm hoping that answers your questions.
I get it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of the street abandonment? Anybody who wishes to speak against?
I'm here just for information on it.
Okay.
If you own one of those houses.
Okay.
I want to know that the streets are not being closed so that you cannot access the property. Ours is the farthest one into the campus.
Let me put this to Steve. Could you hear that question? The question is one of access. Yeah, if you want to come up to the, so we can just get your question on the record. And if you would just state your name and your address for, for the record, please.
I'm Olaf A. Howard, five four four one, South US Highway three seventy-seven, Stevensville, Texas. The address of the house is, I think, is two sixty Saint Felix Street. I want information as to if there would still be access to the property. I wasn't quite sure about that statement. Who would be responsible for the sewer and water lines if those lines are closed? If those streets were closed, does that mean the property owner would be responsible for the water and sewer?
Thank you, ma'am. Let's, let's throw this question to Steve. Could you hear that question, Steve?
I believe I picked up on most of it, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so she's.
I think the reassurance that we need to provide here, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead, Steve.
I believe the reassurance that maybe she's looking for is that, as I mentioned earlier, I don't think the city has any desire to piecemeal this and sell it or abandon, you know, one lot at a time. I think it's going to be more of a all or none principle as Tarleton acquires properties. We want to have the ability to allow them to, to close that portion of the street or abandon that portion of the street to allow them to expand their campus. But no way would I anticipate the city to ever allow the abandonment of a street to occur that would therefore landlock a property owner. In fact, that would, I think, venture into the territory of illegal taking, and that would be a legal situation that the city would not want to get into. So this is, again, I think, more of an effort to position us where we can move forward as those properties are acquired and only to comply with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I just wanted the assurance that it would not be landlocked where somebody, only Tarleton could purchase it.
She also, Steve, she also asked about the, about city services being provided to those properties. So, so if, if this abandonment is approved, would city services still be provided up until the point Tarleton acquires?
So I think, I think, again, the way I'm using this word again would be, this would not occur unless the property owner sold the property to Tarleton and through the abandonment, Tarleton wished that, or wanted us to abandon that portion of our potable system and our sewer main. So again, I don't, I don't think this is a process where the property owners along these streets have to be concerned about us discontinuing service. That is not, not going to be the case. It would only be after these properties are acquired that the city would engage the abandonment process.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there anybody else here who wishes to speak against this?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Why don't you come up and just give us your, your name and address?
Cecily Backus, four nine one five, County Route two fifty-eight, Dublin, Texas. But we have the property at nineteen oh one West Washington, which is, which I know that's on down. But my question, I guess, is, he said it wasn't something he was seeing immediately expecting, but isn't there a city council meeting if y'all approve it on this on April the sixteenth?
There is a city council meeting. Steve, would this be heard and would the abandonment go through, or would it be held?
That's a great question. Madam Commissioner, the process would be, the commission would give a recommendation from tonight's meeting to the city council. City council will hold an additional public hearing at the next city council meeting in April, and they will make a final decision on the abandonment.
So I guess that was my question, because if, if the city, if y'all were to approve it, right, and then we have a city council meeting, we have a public hearing, and then they approve it, but Tarleton hasn't acquired her property or my property, it, isn't that?
Seems like we're putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, and also, as a property owner along that street, you would have first opportunity to acquire the, the street. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but the property owners would have the, the opportunity to, to acquire the property or the street portion right next to their property, if it's abandoned?
Once, once the street is abandoned.
Right, they would have the first option to acquire.
Each property owner.
Your portion of that street.
That street would have first right of refusal.
I guess that's where, that's not talking about necessarily the street that I'm talking about, I'm talking about on hers, though. How would that keep her from being landlocked?
This, this is not something that's going to happen immediately.
Okay.
The preparation is such that when the university acquires all the property, the street, the city council then has the opportunity to convey the street and the utilities over to the university at the time when the university has control of all the property. If the university got both sides of your piece of property, but they still haven't negotiated with you or such, the street's not going to close.
Okay. I guess that's why I was just wondering why there was already a city council meeting scheduled for that, if that's the case, was just my question. I mean, I'm not trying, I'm just, I just want information.
I think, and Steve, you can correct me, is it, is the city council is required to hear it after we hear it, correct? Within a certain number of days, the city council has to address it if we've.
Absolutely. The city ordinance requires that. Once, once it's initiated by city council, I'm sorry, I think I'm having some slow feedback on the audio. What's happening here is, again, let me just kind of back up a little bit. The city council initiated this action on February first. And once they discussed the abandonment, the next step is that it comes to planning and zoning for a public hearing. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, after tonight's public hearing, will make a recommendation back to the city council. And the last part of this process would be that the city council holds their public hearing, again, received input from the citizenry, and then they would render a decision on if they move forward with the abandonment. The verification point, even if they decide that the street will eventually be abandoned on Monday, or I'm sorry, the first meeting in April, that does not necessarily mean that there will be immediate action to abandon the street. As we stated, this is to prepare for the future as Tarleton acquires those properties along these streets.
Sir?
Yeah, I mean, I have some more questions on another one, but that's good.
All right, Steve, just so I'm clear in my mind, if the city council votes to, to abandon, they can set some, choose some date in the future when that actual abandonment would occur. So it doesn't, if they vote, vote to abandon, it's not immediate, correct?
That is correct. And just for example purposes, the case we heard maybe two months ago for the abandonment of the highway in the downtown area, that, even though it has been approved to be abandoned, no action has been taken to move forward with that. It's, it's, again, more of a preparation process, I believe, as we know what the future is. Based on what we know, the future steps, unless Tarleton evolves, is that they intend to abandons the grounds.
I see. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Nix?
Madam Chair, may I address the?
Please, please come and state your name for the council.
I think I can enhance Mr. Gillen's information perhaps, and maybe I can confuse even more.
My name's Alan, I live at one one three Ben Hogan. It is, it is the intention of Tarleton to ultimately own all of these properties along all of these streets that we're discussing now. That's the reason that the council referred it to y'all for public hearing and consideration. It is, and if my understanding is correct, it is illegal for Tarleton or the city to prohibit access to private property by anyone that owns that property or anyone that they lease that property to. And as long as that property remains in private ownership, they must be allowed access, and they will be provided with city services, utilities, fire, police, et cetera. And that's, that's part of the law that we are required to uphold.
Okay.
It's Tarleton's intention to acquire all of these properties on both sides of these rights of way, but until they do, those rights of way must remain open to allow access to the properties. The city will maintain the water and sanitary sewer so that the properties will be served by these. If and when Tarleton buys the properties and the streets are in fact abandoned, Tarleton has the option of assuming control of those utilities. They are now private property utilities, and it is their responsibility to maintain them. If they do not desire to have the water or sewer there, it will be capped or plugged, as the case may be, at the city side. And then Tarleton, if they need services in another location, will provide that service at that location then from whatever is the nearest possible service area for them. But I, I think the people are rightly concerned, because if I had that property, I would want to make sure that I could have access and continue to have the utilities provided, and we will, the city will provide that. I think we're required by law to do that, and we'd be foolish if we did not, because they are our residents, and we want them to continue to have those services as long as those properties are occupied and in private ownership.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope that allays your fears. Yeah? Okay. Any other, anybody else wish to speak for or against this abandonment? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion. Tom?
Sir?
I move that we approve the abandonment.
Recommend council approval.
As stated in the request.
And who was the second? Nick? Do we need to discuss?
I'm just worried about traffic getting in and out of the stadium and stuff, since it's directly associated with it and trying to get to the Wisdom Gym from Harbin. That's my only concern.
Well, I don't think they're going to, Tarleton won't close the street. They're still going to need it for that very purpose.
That's what they said about Lilian, too.
Well, yeah, but I mean, they're, they're putting in a parking lot, they've got approval for a parking garage on Felix, and so they're going to be building that. They're, you know, they're, it only makes sense for them to have egress and entrance there by the football stadium. I mean, it makes sense.
It's just a matter of time before they ask for the other street that runs up to the front of Chamberlain next, and then that would have them all blocked out. But as to them, that's a good way to get around there for the, for the city to be able to get around, for the residents of the city.
As an alternative route, in lieu of driving down.
Down Harbin.
Avoiding that intersection at Harbin. But I believe, I believe what the construction of, of the road, the road construction that's happening on Harbin, hopefully will alleviate some of that congestion, so we won't have any.
Also, I feel that that's also another reason why they're doing this, because if they go ahead and abandon these areas, they can go ahead and cap those areas during the construction process instead of after the streets are finished.
Which also concerns me for the people who still own properties there.
But they can't do it until.
But, but again, and as it was noted, if, if they're not, if those, if those services are not being provided to our citizens, then that is, that is an illegal taking and there's whole other set of issues there. So I don't, I don't know that their, their services will be affected.
And it doesn't look like there's anything else on Sloan except for the address at nineteen thirty that would be serviced by water or sewer.
And I believe that is a, that is a rent house.
Okay.
All right, are we ready to vote on this? Do we need to do a roll call vote? But let's, let's try a group vote and see how it goes. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of the abandonment of Sloan Street, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Oh, okay, wait. We're, we're going to do roll call. All right, Tom, you are an aye.
Yes.
And Bruce?
Aye.
Justin?
Nay.
Mary?
Well... I'm going to say aye.
Okay.
I'm going to change my vote. I said nay previously, but I'm going to say aye.
Okay. Brian?
No.
No? And Nix, an aye. Nix, an aye. So we've got one, two, three, four, five. The ayes have it. So that will move forward to council with a recommendation to abandon Sloan Street.
Can I ask Steve a question? This, this is general information.
Let me introduce the next thing and during his presentation. All right, so we're going to move ahead to case number AS two zero two-two dash zero zero three, abandonment of Tarleton Street from Harbin Drive to Saint Felix Street. Nope, Saint Felix, Saint Felix Street. Steve?
Basically, the same comments as I had in the previous case, but for this particular street abandonment would be Tarleton Street from Harbin to Saint Felix, same process, same, same initiative taken by city council on February first for consideration and then sent to P and Z for a public hearing. Decision with your recommendation will be, again, reviewed by the city council at the April meeting, by a public hearing and the final decision. And Madam Chair, be glad to answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. I believe Tom has a question for you.
Steve, has the university provided the city with their comprehensive thoroughfare plan showing how this property, as they acquire and close off property and then becomes theirs, how their traffic in and out is going to affect the city?
Commissioner, I'm, I'm certain that has occurred. I personally have not seen it. But I'll be glad to ask around and get the appropriate folks involved and see if that has been shared with us. But since our thoroughfare plan is out there and we are working with Tarleton very specifically as they expand their footprint, I'm, I'm certain that those discussions have, have taken place. Of course, with the expansion of Harbin, all that has been taken into consideration. I know there are discussions with Tarleton on traffic flow with the Harbin project. So I want to say yes. I personally have not seen it, but I'm sure it has occurred.
What begins to happen is these streets close down and they remove them because they're building on them, or however that eventually works. They're still limiting how you get in and out of campus, and as the campus grows, by experience, I've seen this happen, that the city will be impacted in some form or another because of the limited in and out access from the university. But their continued traffic and growth will, will continue, but they're still limiting how you get in and out of campus.
Great, great observation, and certainly a piece of information that development services should be aware of, so I appreciate the comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this abandonment? Anybody who wishes to speak against the abandonment of Tarleton Street, I should say?
Hi, this is Kyle Moore, I'm on the Zoom.
Hi, Ms. Moore.
How are you? So I'm here along with Cecily. We have Cecily back this property under contract at 1901 West Washington, which further in this meeting will be impacted by the proposed closure of St. Felix. But I'm here to speak against the closure of Tarleton. Your recommendation to close Sloan, I think, makes sense in Tarleton's plan. I understand that they're kind of working backwards, kind of Sloan first and then towards West Washington. But in the case of West Tarleton Street, Turner, and then obviously Felix, I would speak against it. In, in the case of Tarleton Street, the biggest reason is because Ms. Howard still owns the house at Tarleton and St. Felix. And I think one of the commissioners said, and I would agree with it, I think the city or Tarleton are putting the cart before the horse. Even if, even if this is future planned use and they can't abandon the street until they have ownership of all the properties, until they do, I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission should vote in favor of allowing them to abandon these streets while there's property ownership outside of Tarleton, still on the street. So I'd be okay with Sloan, but on Tarleton, there's still a property owner there, and that can impact the property owner's value, not only their access, which won't be limited until Tarleton acquires it, which I understand, but it could impact the value of that real estate to a potential other private owners. So in the case of Ms. Howard owning that street at Tarleton and Felix, I would speak against this at this time. I just think they're putting the cart before the horse on this one.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak against this abandonment? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, can I get a motion, please?
I move that we recommend the abandonment to council as noted in the application.
Okay, approve, approve the abandonment, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we need to talk, or are you guys ready to vote?
Well, I went and inspected the various properties on all four of these streets today. And it appears that the house at 260 St. Felix, which is the one at the corner of Tarleton and St. Felix, has been abandoned. It is in severe disrepair, and I assumed that, based on that observation, that they had in fact already sold. Obviously, they haven't, but from the information that I've heard now, but it certainly appears abandoned.
We just acquired that this past summer through foreclosure. We had it financed. We just were able to get it back.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I see, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so essentially, this is, is a very similar vote, but there's perhaps a slight difference as the one objection came through. So I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote, unless there's more discussion.
I, yeah, I, I would like to add another thought here.
All right.
Is that an abandonment of the street puts pressure on the landowner to sell. I have understood in the past that Tarleton has made every attempt to refrain from using eminent domain to acquire properties. And I feel that this puts us in a bad position. We're basically saving them from having to use eminent domain. Where I figure eminent domain is the proper vehicle for them to use if they want to acquire this property.
I'm inclined to agree with you.
I speak from experience, because my boyhood home became a university parking lot from eminent domain.
Can I ask a question of the property owner?
Is that... We really can't at this, I mean, we, we're not supposed to go back into a public hearing, but why don't you phrase your question and let's see where we're at.
It appears that there is a, an entrance off of Tarleton to the back of your property. Is that...
It's the case into a garage.
There is a garage at the back, so that's my concern. An abandonment of Tarleton, at first I was thinking, well, if, if she has access on St. Felix, it shouldn't matter, but if the access to the backyard where there is a garage, that is off of Tarleton Street, that, that to me, I think that's important to consider.
All right, but it's still an answer that the city would not, you know...
It wouldn't go to Tarleton first, it'd go to the landowner.
Well, they, they only, they're only required to, to allow access.
On the road.
On the road. And if they have both Tarleton and St. Felix, then they could require her to use St. Felix and not allow her to use Tarleton, which would limit the access. And again, and that goes back to what, what was being said, that, that puts her in a corner. It restricts her use of the property, encourages, it, it puts more pressure on her to sell the property. And, and it is, to, to me, that's a, that's a taking of a sort. And, and it...
That does make sense.
If they want it by eminent domain, they need to take it by eminent domain and not, not use the city as, as a roundabout way to take this property or put pressure on these property owners.
Because if there ain't access to the property, they only have to allow one access.
Right.
Not two.
Right. And there is parking at the front of this house, and that could be their argument. Oh, well, she can park at the front of the house. I, I see that going.
I suspect that, although I don't have, I have very little, I have no experience in how Tarleton operates, but I do have experience how the A and M system operates. And experience tells me, although that's, that's what it is, for them to be a friendly neighbor, which is, it appears to me, from what I understand, that's where they want to be, this is a process that's setting up for stuff way in the future.
It's not that way in the future, actually. They've already got plans for the hotel and the parking lot, and they want to build it right there. And so...
The eminent domain process could...
It takes a long time.
Could minimize the value that the owner would get for the property.
But it also can take a very long time for a project that Tarleton wants to move right now. And if, if they're using the city as a roundabout way to, to pressure these property owners, I don't like that at all.
I don't know that they are.
And I, I don't think anybody would be okay with that.
You've been here longer than I have.
Mr. Nix stated to us earlier on the previous case that it is illegal for the state, for the city to abandon any street that, even though we are voting on abandonment, that to close off any access, even if the street is in fact legally abandoned. But if I've learned anything over the course of the last two years since this pandemic started, I have learned, much to all of our detriment, that governments at various levels tend to ignore the law when it is not convenient. Now, I'm not accusing the city of Stephenville of having done that, but I kind of think Stephenville is an exception to that at this point.
Let's not get off in the weeds too much here.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm thinking we're going down a slippery slope when we start speculating, you know, what Tarleton is trying to do by using the city and not using eminent domain. Although I, I think those are all very valid comments and concerns, I, I just don't feel comfortable that that is a topic that we need to be publicly debating, but we don't have many facts to support that one way or the other. So I would, I would urge you as the commissioner or the chair to maybe just force the vote on this particular issue. With the understanding that the city council will again have a public hearing and make a final decision on if the abandonment will occur.
All right.
And I, I appreciate the fact that you allow me to make those comments and understand that this, with all due respect, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, let's go ahead and vote on this and just get, get it down for the record where, where you all stand. So we're gonna do a roll call vote. The motion stands to recommend to council approval of the abandonment of Tarleton Street. Tom, you're a, a yea or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Bruce?
Nay.
Justin?
Nay.
Mary?
Nay.
A, and Brian, you're a...
No.
Nay? And Nick?
Yes.
All right, so on that one, it looks like the nays have it. So the recommendation will go to council to, to not abandon Tarleton Street. But it, it's a four to three vote on that, as opposed to a three to four on the previous. Okay, so we're gonna move on to case number AS 2022-004, abandonment of Turner Street from Harbin Drive to St. Felix, St. Felix Drive. Steve?
Yes, ma'am, same comments on this particular street abandonment as I had on the previous two cases. I did feel to point out the staff comments on it from Public Works Department on the previous case, but on this case, it's on page 55. Again, it's remain in the public water may be abandoned with the, I'm sure the city ensuring that those were abandoned correctly, where it wouldn't infringe upon or provide any jeopardy to the, the city systems. Again, this will go to council in April, and with that, ma'am, I'd be glad to answer your questions. I believe also we may have one speaker who had indicated that they would be present tonight to discuss or to testify regarding this case.
Okay, on this specific case?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Do y'all have any questions for Steve? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of the abandonment of Turner Street? Anybody here who wishes to speak against? Yes, sir.
My name's David Kincaid, and I live at 506 County Road 163 Stephenville. My office is located at 251 North Harbin, on the corner of Turner Street. My concern is one of, you know, the more I hear, you know, I think great, then I think not great. But I'm required by the city to have 17 parking spaces for my office building. 11 of those spaces are on Turner Street. If the, if I can have access to Harbin, so my tenants can get in and out, my staff can get in and out, and we can use those 11 parking spaces, then I have no issue. My fear, though, is that, you know, if, I don't want to be buying Turner Street for 160 feet, you know? But that's, that's my concern.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anybody else here who wishes to speak against this abandonment? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that the abandonment of Turner Street, case AS 2022-004, be denied.
I'll second.
Okay. I'm assuming we're all kind of going down the same logical routes we've been, so can we move straight to a vote?
I'm, I'm going to reiterate all of my arguments on the previous case.
I'm assuming we, we've hashed this one out. All right, then, so this is the reverse, the motion is to deny. Tom, do you wish to deny?
No.
No. Bruce, do you wish to deny? Justin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I'm a no, and Brian, you're a...
Yes.
Yes? And Nick?
No.
Stick it with a no. Okay, so once again, this will move forward to council with a recommend, a recommendation to deny the abandonment of Turner Street with a vote of four to three. All right, and the final case on our agenda is case number AS 2022-005, abandonment of St. Felix Street from West Washington Street to Sloan Street. Steve?
Yes, ma'am, same, same circumstances, no additional comments. And it looks like we have one additional remark from Public Works on this particular case. And that would be that we would need to retain an easement for a proposed stormwater drainage line on this particular abandonment.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. Be glad to answer your questions.
Thank you.
I do have a comment, and Steve, you may or may not know the answer to this, but do you know how that would affect, the closure of St. Felix, do you know how that would affect the light at that intersection? Would that be removed, or would that stay?
I believe, so I don't have an answer for that. I would anticipate that would be based on how Tarleton would want to use that, that particular street, if abandoned, if they would allow any, any traffic from Washington onto their campus. Similar to Lillian Street, that is completely blocked, with the exception of a drop-off point on the north side of Washington, but the street is, street lights still on, I believe.
Well, the street light also, but it also controls flow past the university. So like going towards, like...
Going southward.
Towards the loop. Yeah, so there's actually a three-way intersection there. At St. Felix, you just have, you already have a three-way. So closing off St. Felix, it would, it would just be a thoroughfare. But, but it was, part of the reason it was put in was because of the concern of students crossing. So would that, that would be, I guess, you've already said, you don't know, so, okay.
The light's only been there a couple of years.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Steve. Let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak in favor of the abandonment of St. Felix Street? Anybody wish to speak against the abandonment? Yes, ma'am, please come on in. You're the next contestant on.
So we have the property...
Please go ahead, state your name again for the reference.
Cecily Backus. And we have the property at 1901 West Washington. We have an exit onto St. Felix Street right there, and it is our drive-through exit that we do currently use for our property. And yes, like he said, we are under contract if it was, if it goes through. I mean, they're speculative, no offense, but it is a speculative type of a thing. We offered Tarleton the property, and we couldn't come to a number, and then they came in. And that's all, you know, doesn't matter. But the point is, is if I have to, if they close St. Felix Street from Washington, there's a safety concern, I feel like, for my employees and my customers. The majority of them exit out onto St. Felix Street to go to the lot. I mean, it's very hard to get out of our parking lot on Washington Street at 5:00 during the day like that with the light right there. And then secondarily, it affects the value of my property greatly and basically squeezes me where I have to tell the Tarleton, and I'm on Washington Street, and that's not fair. You know, I mean, there's plenty of other properties on Washington that are private commercial use. And so that's really my concern with that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it. Is anybody else here who wishes to speak against this abandonment?
So this is Kyle Moore with Fair Capital in San Antonio. So I'm under contract to buy Cecily's property at 1901 West Washington for retail development. So obviously, the closure of St. Felix would impact that development. We currently have letters of intent to lease the property and a letter of intent to purchase the property after we close. Both those letters of intent are for retail use. And so if they close St. Felix or abandon the street, we have real monetary loss in terms of the lease or purchase from, after we close. At the light there, obviously, on that property, 1901 West Washington, it's Zone B2 for commercial retail, and the light, the St. Felix access, accesses the back of the property for both parking and ingress egress. I don't think it's Tarleton's intention to ever not have us have access to the property, as Steve reiterated, but this commission voting to close St. Felix, again, I would just say it's putting the cart before the horse. We've also been in discussions with Tarleton to come to an agreement to either purchase the property, which, as Cecily said, they aren't interested in purchasing the property essentially at anywhere near market price. So anyhow, we want to use the ingress egress on St. Felix after we close, and we have multiple retail users looking at that property in this market, which would generate, obviously, tax revenue for the city.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak on this abandonment? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I move to deny.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. So the motion is to deny. Tom, do you wish to recommend to council denial?
No.
No. Bruce?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I'm a no, and Brian is a...
He is.
Yes, and Nick?
No.
No. Okay, so once again, we have a four, correct, four, three vote to recommend to council to not abandon. not abandon the street of St. Felix. Now, that'll move forward to council with that recommendation. Of course, as you all know, the city council will make the final decision here. We only recommend. So anybody who wishes to speak to city council when they meet on this in April, you'll want to show up to that meeting and have your voices heard because it is not a done deal by any means. And that's it, folks. Can I have a motion? Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We appreciate your time.